The records show that trustee Anderson is also present even though the village clerk elected not to add a name to the trustee.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Anderson.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion placing village manager Turner on continuing daily leave beginning Monday, October 8, 2003, to investigate unresolved and unanswered financial questions and issues relating to the removal of village property by village manager Turner and continue until the village board receives answering documents requested from its investigation.
Second.
Comments?
Comments?
Trustee Anderson.
Trustee Anderson is not making a question.
Trustee Anderson.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to know what documents are the board requesting?
That's it.
Merges.
I still have a question before you even... I got questions.
No, I recognize trustee.
I got questions.
No, but I have one for just a second.
Question? You got questions?
Myers.
Williams. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, which major?
Here we go again, right now we see that these same trustees.
That's it.
First of all, we don't even know whether or not this meeting is a legitimate meeting.
Myers.
Because we didn't know anything about the posting of this meeting until Wednesday. That's when I first got notice that there will be a meeting on Wednesday.
That's because the meeting was disrupted. The last time we met, the meeting was disrupted, disrupted, and we could not meet. This was posted in the hallway at 6:50.
Here we go again, with these same trustees, and they're reckless and irresponsible in their duty.
So stores, you know how to do that. Do it all the time.
You will get sued. You'll get sued personally, and that's what gonna happen to you. You'll get sued.
I always assume somebody will lock up and turn off the lights. Everybody. It's not like the law doesn't tell me, so I can always assume somebody will lock up and turn off the lights.
I'll lock it up.
I don't know if anybody in the audience can hear. That's me. That's me. I don't like the way.
Let me say something for y'all, trustee.
That's...
Lock the door.
That's where we get over.
You wanna lock them up?
Y'all need to know. Get out.
I don't know.
Everybody's here.
Those three that posted their dog won't because they don't want to finish by the day.
I'm just like, talk to them now. Get it out.
I would think you guys are only trying to make things better.
Here's what I suppose. We see right now, this is no secret, these are the same type of tactics that have been going on over three and a half years from these very same trustees. Just wanna do what they wanna do. They wanna change the rule every day. They wanna change the rule. All the rules that have been on this book for over 50 years that this village has been in and existed, all of a sudden now, when I became the mayor, they wanna change the rule. And this is what has been happening all the time. They changed the rule for change to get rid of the first set of, uh, the village manager. They changed the rule. Now here we go again, with nobody running the day-to-day operations of this village, what happened? The water bill goes crazy. You know? We can't find any answers here because the trustees running the day-to-day operation of this village, that is not their responsibility. That is the reason why we in any position that we in here today because they have one, two, three, four votes, and they are changing all the law, laws that have been on these books from day one. And now they have a, uh, a village attorney who ain't rewriting all the laws, who is assisting them. Not assisting me, I the one brought them in, but yet it's there. They go with these trustees, changing all the rules, changing all the law as they go along. You're gonna see, not only with this thing, with this water thing that just happened with these high bills, there is no reason that we should've gotten these high bills and least not notified to this citizen. We can't notify because we don't have anybody running the day-to-day operation of this village. Those are the same tactics that we're gonna be having. This is just one of the first things that happened. We're gonna see a knowing that's a thing that's gonna be happening out there. People gonna be running reckless. Nobody done understanding what's going on. Right now we got employees don't even know who to report to because the trustees have changed the rule and not having to try, uh, report to the mayor since we don't have a village manager. They should be reporting to the mayor. But now, here they go with four votes, change the rule, make the, uh, the department head an employee report to them. Unhurt them. There's no way that the trustees will be governed. They're not supposed to be doing that. Set the law, and they should be, uh, 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 just set the law and let the executive part of it run the village. But, this is what we seeing. This is the position that we been in for over three and a half years because these very trustees, led by trustee Haynes sitting over there right now, he the one leaving all this mess. He been on the board for 15 years and you can tell what's been going on. What has he done since he been on the board for 15 years?
I'll call you when I get home.
Put that village in the condition that we in today. Well, Mr. Mayor, I put it to you like this. We need help, and you need to get help in this village. That's what you need to do. Because the peoples of this town got a right to speak at these meetings, and they get up and walk out, and they get paid for it. They wronged this citizen. Then they call a special meeting and get paid for it. And then it's, I went wrong. The very same thing, and you're correct, the very thing that we could do in these special meetings that they called for, we could do them in our regular meeting. We can do them in the regular meeting. Or what they do, because we know we have to vote in this regular meeting, you want to do same thing, leave, cancel the regular meeting, do not come to the regular meeting, walk out on the regular meeting, and then come in and call a special meeting the whole day.
Mr. Mayor, that two-way street is two-way. You're not working with the trustees when you appoint somebody illegally. You don't appoint somebody at a budget hearing, you do it at a board meeting where it's done right. Nobody's saying you can't appoint her, they're saying do it right. You insist she sit up there tonight as well as last Tuesday. That's wrong. If she can sit up there, so can I. She's not appointed.
She hasn't been appointed, ma'am.
She has not been appointed. Attorney General told me that you cannot do that.
The meeting that I, uh, appointed the trustees did not say a special budget meeting. It said a special meeting, and we amend the meeting out anytime. We've done it hundreds of times, many, uh, amended special meetings. And you know it, you been here a hundred times, it's ain't been a hundred times that we talked about it.
We haven't missed a meeting in three years. Tell these people the truth.
Amend these, uh, uh, amend these meetings to slow they get, uh...
And why are you backpedaling on the water situation? This was a known fact before this all came about, that that bill would triple. That's not something new.
No, it's not. We did know that was gonna triple. How it tripled it because we did an estimated bill in the summertime, and then used that to, and to decide what their bill is gonna be. You can't do that without notifying the citizen. Knowing that they're gonna be a high bill when we do two months plus the increase up on top of that bill. And you know we have to notify somebody about it. The village manager, well, in the process of doing that, but what we do, we send the village manager out of here and put her on a paid leave. That's no excuse for a paid leave. What the hell is that about a paid leave?
I have a question. Mr. Anderson. I mean, you was able, if you was able to put on you what you been talking about, but I'ma challenge you on a couple things that you just got to say.
It's what I'm gonna say.
I'm challenging you a couple things because I want to give you a little the fact. The fact, I mean, yes, you're saying what you're saying.
Let him talk.
I didn't interrupt you. I did not interrupt you. You had to say it. I didn't interrupt you. I did not interrupt you.
Let him talk. Please, let's get to the point. I would like you, please, just please.
Only thing I'm telling you, first of all, sir, do not tell this audience that they did not know that these bills were gonna go up, and you did not know that that was gonna happen. You right about one thing as far as being estimate the bill, we asked at that time, and I asked why did we estimate? Why was the bill estimated? Because what happens is when you estimate that bill, you don't take a reading. You give an estimate based on usage over a period of time of average usage. But you, and everyone else, and everybody that you talked to, that this bill was gonna go up, you knew that when we voted, when it was voted on and it was approved, that the water rates would go up, it was stated at a meeting two months ago that it was gonna go up to $3,057 in April, and I had always. Everyone knew that. But what happened? Estimating came out. That shouldn't have happened. That's the first thing that should never have happened. You talking about day-to-day? We have person take care of day-to-day at the time, but it still happened. Now, it comes back, when you, when everyone's gonna get charged for that water that was estimated at $3,037, or $3,067 at 550 now. Instead of you making it intelligent and saying, hey, look, all those that were estimated will continue to bill you at your regular rate for 350 until you catch up, and then move forward with 550 for anyone who, uh, that's not estimating. Then you could've did that. You could've done, but don't sit here and try to make it, look, I'm tired, I am sick, I hope these people are too, and tired of politics out here. I'm tired of that. These people came out here because their water bills was high, mine's included. Mine's low. But, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm just, I'm sorry. I'm trying to explain that to you.
You were correct, and what you was saying is that he didn't say that he didn't know what's going up.
He did know.
He said he didn't know what's going up.
Yes, he did. Yes, he did. Yes, he did. Yes, he did. That's the first thing. That's the first thing that he's gonna... The second, the second thing I would try to reiterate is this. This board is kind of a hard thing. Everybody keeps, he keeps telling the mayor, keeps telling everybody.
This board is a joke. Not a joke.
Okay. But you know something? You know, I...
Not as big a joke as the mayor.
Everybody else here wants to hear. You're one person. You're one person. You're one person, ma'am. You're one person. I'm sure everybody else wants to hear, but that's...
Let him finish up because we just...
You just one person. All I'm trying to do is break, raise the facts to you. I'm not asking you to love, I'm telling you the fact, the cold hard fact, is why we have the bills made at our rate today. Why the bills want us? Because the water has to, we have to pay for infrastructure. We have to show that we have enough money to pay back a loan that we're trying to borrow. We have to show that we have...
We were doing that in the last year, 2012, they was taking some way of money anyway. That's fine, ma'am. I mean, honestly, why don't y'all...
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry that I tried to explain, you already made your manner when you walked through the door, you didn't wanna hear the truth. You wanna hear what someone wants you to know. Wants you to know. The same person. You wanna hear the truth from the same person. Pass it, pass it out.
I have questions.
Okay, let's not talk all at once. Now, we, we had here long we wanted to try to get the message out.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, residents should be aware that we supposed to pay $5.50 for every thousand gallons that we use.
That's what we hoping.
If we don't have no water bill, nobody here is probably using a thousand gallons worth of water. I wanna know what quarter are you guys using in order to send those water bills out? Is there no way anybody can use $1,500 worth of water during one month's time? I wanna know where is the quarter that you are using to put that stuff out? It is absolutely wrong. And again, with, uh, uh, to go back with, uh, what Merges was saying, that we have been paying Robinson Engineering for the last 45 years.
Merges didn't say that. Merges didn't say nothing about that. No, he didn't. So don't put my voice in my mouth. I said nothing about Robinson Engineering. I told something about something different. I said nothing about...
No, don't interrupt me.
Don't raise this, no. Don't lie. Don't lie. Don't lie. Don't lie. I just said nothing about it. Get your facts straight. Get your facts straight. It wasn't no time, but we's right.
Robinson Engineering has submitted...
You said what you want.
For the best part of...
No, you don't have to. You saw it. You said right there, and you rounded up niggas like that this board is against the village. That's what y'all so...
You don't have to go down like that. It's a family. That's what you don't have to do.
I'm not bitching my face. But anyway, Robinson Engineering...
How you staying? You been messing up just like them normal people just like that.
I said, I'm not gonna try to...
Everybody's ready to lose. That's fine, man.
I gotta go.
Come on, man.
You guys should know that Robinson Engineering has been the engineering firm in this village for the last 45, 50 years. They wouldn't even tell us that Wells 1, 2, or 3 were contaminated. Don't tell me that they didn't know. All these five trustees knew back in May 2011, and they wouldn't even tell them. And now they want you to pay more for contaminated water that's been treated.
All the trustees and the mayor. All the trustees and the mayor knew. Look at that, trust me. All trustees and the mayor.
And I've been saying.
Know that. We tried to legitimize this position back in 2010.
And he didn't wanna get the air raiders.
Everything that we got going right now with the state script. Look at your business. Go back in 2010, look at your business. We tried to bring airstrip in 2010, he beat some business. So look at what you did after that. You got it now, don't you? Now you want it to happen.
Now, now, let me clear up this fact. I'd like to clear up this fact. Robinson Engineering submitted the application. The application was rejected because a Robinson Engineer did not tell us Wells 1, 2 were contaminated. You at L.D.O.E.P.A. sent out...
That's not right.
You can see right now, she gave him the facts out there, he done wanted it.
But they're not true facts, they're lies.
This is bad. Robinson Engineering submitted an application with the $2,000, $2 million for well 3. They, we came to a meeting and told them well 1 and 2 were contaminated. They rejected the application, told them they had to come back with a plan to clean up all 3 wells. That's fact, and he knows. All of the rest of the trustees know. Robinson Engineering has been planning this village for the longest, and they know. Now we got an attorney firm that's sitting up here, we had paid them a quarter of a million dollars, and they only won one case, and that one case was getting rid of the village manager. That's, we always paid them almost a quarter of a million dollars.
Who brought them all for me?
Regardless of who brought them in, they're paying for them to go.
We have to clear it out. We have to clear it out. Who brought them all for me?
Okay? The mayor brought them in, but they trying to keep them. We just paid them a quarter million dollars. You gonna start buying some quarter million dollars that work for you, think you should take that stuff back?
Yeah, take it back.
That's right.
The I.E.P.A. made decisions, not Robinson. They came in and said you will.
Robinson, look, Robinson Engineering submitted the application for well 3. We came here at the town hall meeting in November and told them that Wells 1 and 2 was contaminated. L.D.O.E.P.A. rejected the application and told them they had to come back with a plan to fix all of 3. And now that, Robinson Engineering just submitted an application to L.D.O. Department of National Resources. They told them in the meeting that the information was given was so outrageous, they couldn't even believe it. They rejected that application. You tell me who's working for this village? It is not Robinson, or isn't the law firm, or none of these five trustees. They taking our money and rolling with it.
That's what's up.
They taking the money.
What about the 40,000? The trustees trying to make...
You went on TV in public and told the nation there was fecal matter in our waters. We asked where that residence was, and you refused to give us that information. Because it's a lie. It's a lie. Yes, it is.
It's not a lie.
It's a lie.
You didn't have to evolve to that, ma'am.
That's a lie.
Y'all are lying.
I'd like to finish.
There is fecal matter in that well, you should give us that address so that...
I'm not gonna sue for this, so I feel you got to raise...
Why? Everybody should know where that house is, but there's...
Well, I mean, it's yours, but it's not true. There's lots of feces in that house. So it is, you need to check before they go.
It's a lie. Don't yell, you bum, ma'am. Ain't no poop in anybody's water.
All right, hold on, ma'am. Hold on, guys. We don't wanna get out of here. We don't wanna get out of here, trustees.
It's a lie.
No, you're a liar.
No, you're a liar. Where's the house with the fecal matter? Do you know where's home?
Yeah, I do.
It is my business.
If it's messy, yours, then that's your business, but if it's messy, then that's mine.
Everybody listen, listen, they gotta get up right here. The water bill that been missing, is it correct? Well, here's the bottom line. We know that our distribution, uh, our water distribution is broken. We know that. Ain't no secret about that. We know that the, uh, the meters are old, we know they outdated. It could be anything with the, with the...
All of a sudden now?
Yeah.
All of a sudden now, they broke?
The meeting is the whole point.
Why when they broke last month? Why when they broke last week? We been trying to...
So everybody know how our water system is broken. Ain't no secret about that. We know that.
Well, there ain't nobody turning on their faucet and getting poop. That's a lie.
Distribution, and because the meters are old, the pipes are old, we don't know what going on in there.
We have evidence...
Why would you say that without your public works here? Your public works, you mean the public works? That's not true, ma'am.
You... This trustee, uh, that don't pipe's a hole. This trustee know that the water meters that we have is not facing the old outdated water. Water meters that we have in this village only last about... The meter only lasts about five years of life in these meters. And some of these meters are not only 30 years old.
And if you knew this, that the meters were old, why you talk about it before we had this problem?
We're doing something about it.
No, that's now, that's a fact.
That's all part of the Lake Michigan water system. It's all everything. We can actually go on and get well...
And how do you intend to do it without raising the rates?
You can charge these citizens with money.
Keep adding on to the bills.
And all of a sudden now, you saying the water meters? I never heard that. Never heard that's water.
E.P.A. candidates and...
Never heard, the E.P.A. said water meters. The E.P.A. did not, no, these agents did not say the water meters.
They didn't say that.
No, they did not say the water.
Trustee Merges said the water's sick, and the water's sick and it's open. They said, I miss it.
I know. Trustee Merges said, I hope you stop, Mary, quit lying. Quit lying. I did not say that. Quit trying to put words in my mouth. Quit. I'll say it again. I said, if you knew the water meters were broke, why didn't you say something prior to this?
It's been known.
Said, no, it hasn't been known. I didn't know. No, it hasn't been known.
We been talking about irony, uh, all of this is part of the water business.
The meter is out there.
You never said meters.
The water meters is not for water man. The water is going wrong. We got the government man.
Have you come to a meeting before?
Yeah, I'm taking the water man.
Have you ever been there?
Tell the truth.
Have you heard him say that about the meters?
I don't know.
He's never once. I haven't missed a meeting in three years. He's never mentioned the meters.
Now, you know about that, but to hear about that. Because the water meters are broke, he can lie all he wants. The water meters are broke. If he knew that, and he's wrong. He's right. If he knew the water meters were broke, that he's been charging you lawsuit for all that's happened.
Now, Robinson is your engineer first. They...
They don't check to me. 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 They don't check to me.
No, he didn't.
Yes, sir.
We've got videos of all of them, and it was not said. Yeah, prove it.
Hold on. We got, we got somebody who wants to...
That's a nice hearing.
Anderson, Anderson.
You're 20 years.
I wanna ask a question. I wanna ask a question to the board.
Ain't no board.
If the village, if the village...
You mind if I...
Bring it.
Get off my back, get away from me. Get away from me. You guys don't stand up behind me. You guys get ready.
You can't take my...
Walk around them.
I'm looking for him, man.
Mighty.
Don't be scared of that. Right now, I'll be speaking to him. Go say yes to that.
He's got more time here than you do.
You don't disrespect him.
She's disrespectful. Huh?
He was a trustee in this village, and he still has interest in this town.
You don't think all these goons here are in the village? Please.
Yeah, one meeting, guys.
The goons that they brought in?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
A whole bunch of people at the meeting, and they were from Dalton, they were from all over.
Well, that's what we're saying now. I'm gonna propose, I'm, I'm, I wanna propose to the, to the board that we look at and did, at these bills, and look at, come up with some kind of way that we can assist out our residents in these bills.
You still about to...
We can't get a meeting from them. We can't get a meeting. They wanna stay in meeting. That's what I think I wanna talk about.
Somebody said, who said something back there?
If we can get them to stay in meeting, we can get something done. They only wanna stay in meeting where they convenient for what they wanna do. Get rid of the chief of police. That's convenient for them. Get rid of that, the, uh, village manager. Those things are convenient, that's what they wanna do.
With 160 grievances, I'd get rid of them too.
Say that in point to the citizen, that it's important. Why wouldn't they stick around and talk to you? They knew you were here to ask questions about that, and you there.
Say on you. One of the meetings when this was all fixed, people got up and talked and everything, and I looked, and I looked again, and I said, I know you. And he says, where you from? I said, originally from Riverdale. He says, that's where you know me from. And I said, well, how the hell are you? He's just doing good. I said, you still there? He said, yes, I am. Then he got up there, I said, why are you here if you live in Riverdale? Their group asked them to be here. Their group. The mayor and his little group for the water and stuff that went door to door talking about fecal material and everything. Now, you and I both know, it doesn't matter if it's a well, it doesn't matter if it's Lake Wiltshire. When you turn your faucet on, you are not gonna get shit coming out of that faucet. It all goes through a filter system.
That is what I was gonna propose tonight, to ask the trustees, can we come up with something to help the citizen? I had proposed maybe some type of, uh, uh, decrease in the bill.
At this moment, you can't tell a...
I can't tell you nothing now because I can't make a decision when you got five trustees making decisions for the bill. They're not here to make a decision now.
Chris is back there.
Pat, Chris is back there.
We know that, but the point is y'all ain't gonna get that solved if don't nobody stop us in the house.
Tonight, it's a special call meeting. They, they fore and exact you what they're supposed to appoint to this special call meeting. There was only three things on the agenda. The meeting's...
You gotta drive away, so what are you talking about?
You don't know what the hell you're talking about.
The legislature said they didn't know the water was from the lot.
He does not.
The referendum passed.
Stupid.
The residency realizes, the bill went up for $2 per thousand gallons. So referendum that passed is for over $6 per thousand gallons, it's going to increase. We, we did incremental, incremental increases to get the residents used to the increases. So the first $2 brings it up so the village can continue running and fixing...
So you spent your money to practice?
No. No, I'm saying, this is not practice, this is a resident's...
Better leave the IEP.
Used to, an increase if the village residents passed by referendum. This is only one third. This is only one third what the village residents approved.
Hank, where's your water?
Because the village residents...
Which none of your business.
Those of you that were in the meeting know that this trustee wanted to raise your bill to $10. They wanted to raise it to $10 for Dallas State. If we had invited the county to pay $10, you'd have had $10 with this high bill right now. So the only thing we did, we reduced it from the $10 to the, uh, 350 to 550. They wanted to raise it $10 on that budget.
People's average bill has been like 300 to 400.
Those that are meeting with those...
No, they're lying.